I'd like to call the order of the regular meeting, the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for October 16th, 2018, invite you to stand if you choose while Commissioner Nash leaves this in our invocation and then followed by the pledge of allegiance.
If you would, please join me in praying to the God of your choice or none at all. As we gather to make decisions for our community, may we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us. May we always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. Amen.
If you'll please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Denning.
Here.
Commissioner Nash.
Here.
Commissioner Perigent.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson. Here. Under our wards and recognitions tonight, we have a few things to mention. And since Ms. Carroll has arrived, we'll start with the Kentucky League of Cities and their Friend of the Cities Award that you have for us. Ms. Carroll and J.D. Chaney, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is always great. This has become an annual ritual now, right? We're coming to Bowling Green City Commission Meeting every single year, and that is a good thing. As irritating as it may be for us to come and come up here and talk to you all once a year, that means your legislators are actively engaged in passing legislation that benefits the city government. There's not many communities that can say that at all, that they have legislators who are consistently in tune with what city governments need as it goes through the legislative process. Bowling Greens actually has three recipients this year. We're going to honor two of them tonight. Couple of weeks ago, Representative Michael Meredith was awarded a Friend of Cities Award, and we did that in Smith Grove at their council meeting. But tonight, we have two legislators. If you all don't know the history of these awards, our Board of Directors votes to bestow the honor Friend of Cities upon any legislator that either passes legislation or champions legislation that's on our legislative agenda. And then every now and then, we have to give an award to some legislators who kill bills that would negatively impact your ability to make decisions locally or otherwise harm the city. So the Board of Directors votes on those and gives a few of those out each year. Tonight, we're here to honor first Representative Jim Disessary, and it's not the first time that Representative Disessary has gotten an award. Unfortunately, he's not going to be in the legislature next year, and I can tell you from a city government perspective, upon his well-deserved retirement from the legislature, we will miss him tremendously. Because if you want to look at a legislator who has consistently fought for local control, decisions being made by local officials on behalf of their constituents instead of having a centralized government in Frankfurt do that for you, you won't find anybody better than Representative Disessary over the past, over his legislative career. That was constant. He was the one that first brought legislation to repeal prevailing wage. He did, he ran that legislation even before it was cool to do so. And he ultimately was the one that got that passed. This legislation, he helped, this session, he helped us on several bills, supported us on the CERS pension issue, on the separation issue, supported us as well with regard to some other pension issues, was kind of the sole voice there, and killed some bad legislation in committee, almost single-handedly. Not almost, single-handedly did so that would have preempted your local control when it came to naming your streets and your highways. So I am honored on behalf of the Board of Directors, Mayor Wilkerson sits on the board, on behalf of the KLC Board of Directors to be here tonight to honor Representative Jim Disessary as a 2018 Friend of City.
Thank you, J.D., and Kentucky League of Cities, and Mayor Wilkerson, the Commission. It's been a great pleasure and honor serving you over the last 14 years, and it's nice to go out with a recognition from KLC. You are well represented in Frankfurt with these fine individuals behind me and their staff, and it's just been an honor to be able to serve the people of Bowling Green and Warren County, and I'm very grateful for this honor today, and I'm truly appreciative. And I'm appreciative of each one of you as well, because every one of you up there, I consider a friend, and it's so good to see you all again, and I'm just happy to be here. And I know, Joe, you're happy to see Amy.
I sure am.
Thank you all very much.
She's been my buddy for many, many years, and I appreciate it.
The second legislator, you've probably already seen him in the audience, you can't, you can't miss Mike Wilson. Senator Wilson, I think, has been a Friend of City now three or four times during his career with, in, serving in the state senate. We always enjoy working with Senator Wilson, who's now a member of senate leadership, and that's something that the city ought to take note of. That is a, I won't use the word powerful, but it is an influential position that helps craft legislation and move it through the process and assign it in the committee. So having someone in the leadership team from your community really benefits, benefits the city of Bowling Green and his constituents. And we found that a great advantage for somebody who endorses local control and the concepts of home rule in the way that Senator Wilson does. He helps us on several bills and has over the years. This last session, we were approached by the Auditor of Public Accounts related to an issue with a few cities, a few bad actors, not completing their audits. And as ashamed as I am to say, there are a few bad actors out there, and some that didn't complete their audits for 13 years, some that didn't have an audit done for seven years. And the issue in the law was it had no teeth whatsoever. And so we wanted to work with the Auditor's Office in crafting fair legislation that wouldn't be necessarily punitive to city governments, but just put some teeth in the law and also provide some advantages with regard to the completion of those audit reports and their publication. And Senator Wilson was able to bring us together with the Auditor's Office and end up crafting legislation, Senate Bill 91, that did that in a way where the taxpayers weren't punished, where elected officials didn't get their audit reports completed. It was just withhold state funding until there's compliance. So it creates an incentive, no more municipal road aid money, but when the city gets in compliance, it doesn't forever withhold the money. Anything held in arrearsage is still released. So that was a very important provision that he got into there, into the bill to make sure the city and the citizens didn't permanently lose the money because poor decision-making on behalf of a few, of a few city leaders. He also wrote in some other exemptions to make that legislation something that was on our legislative agenda and something that we were able to actively, actively support. He also was supportive of us on the CERS separation issue that ultimately didn't come to fruition, but will be back next year, Senator Wilson, to talk about separating the county employees' retirement system and hope he'll continue to champion on that. You all are extremely fortunate, we're extremely fortunate from the, from the KLC side of things to be able to call him a 2018 Friend of City, so join me in congratulating Senator Mike Wilson.
Mayor and Commissioners, and I mean, I all know all of you guys and friends, and I'll tell you something, I want to thank J.D. and Brianna because they are easy to work with, great to work with, great representatives for cities up there. So it's always a pleasure for me to work with them. I think we've done quite a few bills. One was to shut down the internet gambling cafes that were about to close, our VFW and also our American Legion, so we were proud to work on that. Brianna was the one who was at the table presenting and answering some questions, and so, again, one of the things that has really impressed me the most about our area is how easy it is to work with you guys and gals, all of you, and county government, how we all work together, and I think it is unique to our area. The cooperation, the collaboration that we have for our area, I mean, it's evident with all the growth and everything that we have. Working with Mike Harmon was a real pleasure, made some tweaks to the bill that made it a better bill. And again, I just am honored to have this award and to be representing Bowling Green and Warren County. Thank you so much.
Mayor, I don't know what protocol is, but typically, we take a photo of city officials, or you come down or come up to present the award, or with the Commission, however you all, however you want to do it.
If we can all, if we can all stand, get behind you here, and you guys can stand in the well, and we'll take that picture.
Perfect. We do, Senator Wilson and Brianna.
And I didn't give Brianna enough credit, because she's the Director of Governmental Affairs. She really is the one that makes things happen. If you, if you want Senator Wilson or Disessary to do something, I just have Brianna.
Can you just slide that chair out of the way?
That's exactly right. There you go. I can tell you I'll get that. Hey, Jim. Thank you, buddy. Good to see you. Yeah, doing pretty good.
us over the years, and thank you, J.D. Chaney and Brianna Carroll, working for us from the Kentucky League of Cities. We certainly recognize the efforts that you've made. And the next on the list, Ms. Charlene, I think you and Ms. Kay are up. If you all want to come up, I have a proclamation with regarding to Retired Teachers Association. Oh, and Remanza, I didn't see you slipped in over there. Come on up, too. I'll read it from up here, and then I'll come down and bring it to you if that's okay. This has been on behalf of the entire Bowling Green Board of Commissioners, but it's a proclamation acknowledging Retired Teachers Appreciation Week. Whereas Kentucky's retired teachers have devoted their careers to the education and training of literally thousands upon thousands of Kentucky's youth, and whereas Kentucky's retired teachers have retrained and/or provided primary educational opportunities to hundreds of adults in the state who, for one reason or another, had fallen behind in their formal education needed for jobs and social skills. And whereas Kentucky's retired teachers rendered valuable services and diverse leadership roles in their communities and institutions throughout their careers and continue to render such services as retirees. And whereas Kentucky's retired teachers represent the profession which has given basic responsibility for launching the careers of state and national leaders and for laying the foundation for the welfare of all members of our society. And whereas Kentucky's retired teachers have toiled ceaselessly to improve the quality of life in the state and nation, too often in less than adequate circumstances and for less than adequate pay. And whereas Kentucky's retired teachers represent a tremendous pool of experience and training which remains dedicated to the betterment of society everywhere. And whereas Kentucky's retired teachers represent a loyal, patriotic, and concerned citizenry which provided a dedicated and dependable support to leaders in our communities, state and nation. And whereas Kentucky's 2018 General Assembly has honored Kentucky retired teachers by recognizing the third week of October as Kentucky Retired Teachers Appreciation Week, now therefore, we, the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of October 14th through 20, 2018, as Retired Teachers Appreciation Week, and encourage all citizens to reach out to retired teachers and thank them for their hard work and dedication. And I will bring these to you.
Yes. On behalf of the Warren County Retired Teachers, I would like to thank you all for this proclamation and to tell you that we continue to strive to give back to our communities. Recently, we added to our scholarship fund. We're currently working on a book drive now for one of our preschools in the local area. We continue to be part of the community by giving thousands of hours of volunteer work back to our communities, even across the state of Kentucky. And we do appreciate your recognition. One last comment, please take time to go to your Facebook tonight and thank your favorite teacher.
And the thousand hours she's taken, speaking of volunteering, there's just those three ladies right there. That's not counting the rest of the retired teachers. Okay, I believe you're up, Mr. Mizell.
I have just a couple of items. First of all, at the recent KLC conference, there were 23 city officials recognized for an achievement, and Katie Schaller Award was one of those. Katie has received her Level 3 Master of City Governance Award, which requires the city officials to attend 90 hours of approved training, three hours of ethics included in that. That's a lot of training. So I want to congratulate Katie for that award, the Master of City Governance, for all her training hours and work she's put in. She's a very active member of the Kentucky City Managers Association as well, and I'd just like to congratulate her on this recent award. It's a lot of, a lot of achievement. Second thing is, some of you all may have attended, but we had a really good turnout Friday night for our Harvest Festival. We had a lot of good community partners on that, and I think the estimate was 3,000 people or more at Circus Square, Sky Pack, and the Marketplace Friday night. A lot of great activity downtown, and just want to recognize a couple of our partners. Of course, we participated, our Parks and Rec Department, Sokey Marketplace, Warren County Stormwater, the Public Library, Quanis Club, Train Depot, Friends of, the Friends of L&amp;N, Mary Jane's Chocolates, Dance Arts, the Hot Rods, 643, Mariah's, and DRA. And we had several, we probably had eight to 10 city staff there working before and after for the event. I think it was a really good, successful event that will probably try to continue going forward in years to come. So really, really pleased with that. And then the last thing I'd like to mention is we have Brad Wheeler here from WKU to speak to you just for a second about a new program they're gonna, they're getting ready to kick off. Brad, would you mind coming up?
Joining us tonight, Mr. Wheeler. Hi, Brad. I think that's appropriate name for your discussion tonight, right?
Absolutely. We're really excited, WKU's really excited to announce, and recently we've seen in the papers, we're forwarding a bike share program up on campus, and this is one of these initiatives that's both, impacts both WKU and the city, so we wanted to have a conversation, real brief conversation, because I've seen your docket today, about that program. But we are in the process of implementing this program. We had an RFP that was placed, actually, in the fall, we surveyed our students in fall of 2017, and we saw that the students had a significant interest in a bike share program, and so we began to search out RFPs. We put an RFP out there. There were seven individuals that opened our RFP. The one that responded to what we thought would be the lowest cost option for the university was Vero Ride, is a company out of Illinois that does this, and they're going to bring 180 bikes to our campus approximately the first week of November. And so what that program is, is it's, it's an app-activated bike. The students will have an app that they'll download, and they'll be able to scan the bike, and they'll be able to charge to their personal accounts use on that bike. And so we've got a committee that's been established and set up that represents both city and WKU interests to sort of administer the program. These bikes will be governed by a geofence. It's not your typical fence that you'd have in your yard, it's a geofence. I'm learning a whole lot about different, different micro, micro-mobility solutions, is what they call it. And basically, it's a, it's a fence that's, that's just in the air, based on the location, and so we can get those bikes back to whatever geofence that this committee sets up and establishes for these bikes. And basically, we've got about 180 bikes scattered throughout, throughout WKU and over on South Campus that the students can rent. We encourage the members of the community, the city commissioners, we encourage you to be active in our community and get out on those bikes. You can download the app and use the bikes just like our students can. And those bikes, there'll be a bike manager that will operate the program, they'll reset the bikes each day, and so whatever the designated locations for the bikes are for that, for this week, then they'll bring those bikes back to that location. We expect that some business partners will probably sponsor for the students some rides. We also think that some business partners in the community would like bikes at their location, so we certainly are open to expanding the program. This is an exclusive agreement with Vero Ride. They are our micro-mobility provider, and therefore, a lot of cities have dealt with scooters. Basically, all that's, we've, they're our exclusive provider, and nobody will provide a scooter to our campus other than through them, and we have chosen not to, not to accept that product leased up on the hill. So do y'all have any questions in regard to the, to the program?
Will we be able to recognize those bicycles from anything, anybody else?
Yes, you will. They will be WKU branded bikes. They will be red and black. They will have a big red down around the chain guard, and there'll be WKU on the, on the, on the basket up front. It does come with some safety features on it where it's solar-powered, it has solar-powered lights on it, so therefore, when, when they're out on the streets, following proper bike safety protocol, wearing a helmet, when they're out there on the streets, they'll have appropriate blinking lights on those bikes.
Now helmets are not a part of this, though?
Helmets, we had a long, lengthy discussion about helmets. They are not a part of that. We encourage all riders to ride a helmet if you're going to ride a bike. The, the challenge is, is using multiple people using the same helmet, and that staying with the bike, and some hygiene issues maybe sometimes associated with those helmets.
But a helmet would not be required for somebody to be able to use the bike?
That is correct, under what I understand, under, it falls the motorcycle sort of regulations and state, state law.
Are these, like, point-to-point, can somebody pick up a bike at, say they're at Cherry Hall, and they get a bike there and they ride to Spencer's? Can they just leave it there and be done with it, or do they have to run it, take it back to Cherry Hall?
It has to, it continues to charge the account until it's brought back into the geofence area and the bike is locked down. So therefore, they can choose to ride it downtown and leave it at the front doorstep of the courthouse over here, but if that's not a geofenced area and they've not locked that bike down, they will continue to be charged that amount by the company.
They don't have to necessarily ride it from point A to point B back to point A, it's just to another geofenced area?
That's correct. So if downtown, if there was a certain geofence location downtown, they could ride the bike to that location, they could obviously do what they wanted to do, and then obviously pick another bike back up and ride to the back to the, back to the hill.
City, city staff has met, and we've identified a couple of locations for some, some bike geofencing bases, I guess, or what do you call them?
Geofenced areas.
Yeah, so we've got that decided on. One would be in our own parking lot over here behind the Paxton lot, where our city employees park, and the other one was an area over there on State Street where the sidewalk is wider, where the brick sidewalk is in front of your dad's office, roughly. So, so we're cooperating with, with Western as much as we can to help them out with locations, so we think it's going to be a good program.
Is that restricted to WKU?
That's, that's correct. You, you see a bike, if a bike, for example, I know there's been some discussion about hotels in town that may be interested in having a bike or two at their location. Folks that are staying at the hotel could, as long as they downloaded that app, scanned that bike, they could use that bike. So there's, there's a lot of opportunity to expand this program. The next phase, we're going to test this out to see, you know, if 180 bikes from our perspective is adequate, and, and we encourage the city, if you would like to expand the program, we encourage you to do it. It's no cost to the university, that's what was so good about this particular proposal, was the fact there was no cost involved. We did have to sign a sort of a five-year deal with this company, but feel comfortable doing so, and the, they're going to provide probably about $80,000 to $100,000 worth of bikes to our campus for free. So we certainly thought that that was a, certainly a very good opportunity for us to, to take advantage of this technology. There's also electronic bikes, not electronic bikes, but bikes that are, that are, yeah, electronic-assisted bikes, where, thank you, this technology's changing every day, but it actually helps, helps you pedal. So I, I think the next phase, we're probably going to add a few of those to make sure that the old guys can get over the top of the hill, so.
Maintenance, maintenance could be an issue. I'm assuming that if someone checks out a bike, they're responsible for it until they get it back into a geofenced lockdown?
That is, that is correct. And they can track these bikes, so if you load the bike up on the back of a pickup truck and drive it off somewhere, then they can, they can find you. They're, they're, they're obviously able to track the bikes. They'll also maintain these bikes weekly and monthly, so the individual that's responsible for resetting the fleet each day will also be responsible for maintaining the brakes and making sure the bike's appropriately taken care of. We want the bikes to look good, we don't want these bikes to be an eyesore to the community. They even know when the bikes are laying down on the ground versus vertical, so, so they have technology built in these bikes, they're pretty, pretty smart bikes.
I think it's a fantastic program that provides another linkage between the city and the university. I appreciate the university taking the initiative to do it. The mayor was not on board until he heard that you are going to bring on bikes that will help him pedal. My good friend Slim always takes care of him.
I was, I was excited when they brought that proposal to us, so. But we do think there's a major, we're, we're one community, and we certainly want to be one community, so.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler, we appreciate your presentation. Thank you, Brad.
Are there any other awards or recognitions? I do have one reminder, this Saturday is Hazardous Waste Collection Day at Greenwood High School from 8:00 to 1:00. Any Warren County resident is welcome to take paint and electronics and other hazardous waste to, to there at no charge. That's part of what we in the county do, that's just, you're looking at me funny, it is this Saturday, right? Saturday, okay. All right. Any other comments? Any other comments? Mr. Mizel, do you have any comments to add for us tonight? First item is approval of minutes for two meetings, our special work session, Fall Retreat on September 25, 2018, and our special meeting on September 26, 2018. Second motion by Nash, second by Williams. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Please call or roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Ash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2018-41.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning attractive land containing 0.8819 acre from LI Light Industrial to HB Highway Business located at 112 West 10th Avenue, presently owned by Hope House Ministries Incorporated, care of Brian Lewis.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Paragon, second by Nash. It's second reading of a unanimous recommendation for planning and zoning. Are there any other comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2018-42.
Ordinance annexing property by consent. Ordinance annexing 9.62 acres of property located at Zero Morgantown Road with property presently owned by Seven Plus LLC and 2.18 acres of right of way for a total of 11.80 acres, with said territory being contiguous to existing city limits. Approving the addition of this location to the target annexation area map and further approving an associated economic development annexation incentive agreement.
So moved. Nash, second by Denning. Again, commercial property coming into the city. Any comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2018-193.
Municipal order approving the appointment of Tyler Phelps to the position of Public Works Technician in the Public Works Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Denning. Mr. Mizel.
We have several of these items on our agenda tonight. So, I'd like to ask our Human Resources Director, Aaron Holsey, to come up and make these recommendations to you.
Aaron, how are you tonight?
Hi, Aaron. Hey, you're going to see me a few times here, but that's all good stuff, right? So, would like to recommend the appointment of Tyler Phelps to the classification of Public Works Technician. This position became vacant in September when we promoted David Hayner to Facilities Coordinator. Position's responsible for various aspects of the project management on city projects such as preparing cost estimates, bid documents, managing construction contracts, inspecting construction sites, and working with other city departments to coordinate project initiatives. Vacancies were advertised through our normal recruitment efforts. We received 21 applications. We settled on four final to interview. The interview panel was Greg Meredith and Melissa Kansler from Public Works and Tiger Thule from Human Resources. So, Tyler, if you'd like to stand. Tyler Phelps is, just received his bachelor's degree of science from Western Kentucky in construction management. Prior to graduation, he worked as an intern, ground crew leader, and project manager for the Bowling Green Warren County Regional Airport. We completed a reference check by speaking with his past and present supervisors who agreed he possesses the necessary skills and initiative to perform well in this position.
Aaron.
Tyler, I'm sorry. It's not you, Tyler.
May I ask a question, man?
I guess.
Thank you very much. Aaron, I know you just started here with us here in Bowling Green. Certainly, we are glad to have you as our Human Resources Director. Did we do a whole lot of reference checking pertaining to this young man?
Yes.
Is he related to Bobby Phelps?
Sir, he was not one of the references.
Thank God for that.
That's right.
Well, I know his mother, and she's a lovely lady. She's been my friend for years, and I'll vote yes for him because of that.
I just figured that they needed an ace for the Public Works bowling team. That's the only person I ever knew that bowled a 300, so I'm proud.
More than one 300.
Is that right?
More than one 300.
How do you know that?
I'm sorry, we got off track here. Any other comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Congratulations, Tyler. We're happy for you. Municipal order 2018-194.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of David Delp to the position of Labor Two in the Public Works Department.
Moved.
Second. Motion by Nash, second by Williams. I guess we go straight to Aaron.
Right.
So, this is a new position for fiscal year 2019. The Labor Two is responsible for maintaining designated city grounds and structures, providing support for special events, assisting with interdepartmental projects. They may perform various manual tasks and operate light equipment such as the tractor, bush hog, riding mower, and weed eater. They'll maintain the grounds along roadways and the city property, repair sidewalks, repave streets, mowing, assisting with other interdepartmental projects. We require a high school diploma or equivalent of six to 12 months of experience. A CDL license is preferred for this role. Vacancies also advertised through our normal recruitment efforts. Thirty-three applications were received and reviewed, and we selected four candidates to interview. The panel was Bobby Phelps, Gary Harden from Operations, and Tiger Thule from Human Resources. We have selected David Delp, if you want to stand. He has been recommended. David does have the Class A CDL license as well as an abundance of experience in construction, electrical, and operating light, medium, and heavy equipment. David has worked with the public, engineers, and contractors in his 30 years of experience of owning and operating his own company. We feel he will be a great asset to the Operations Division and the city.
Up here, thank you. Appreciate your interest in working for the city, and we'll put you to work. Any comments or questions?
Can you bowl?
Please call or roll.
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2018-195.
Municipal order approving the career path advancement of Joshua Johnson to the position of Equipment Technician Certified in the Public Works Department.
Moved.
Second.
Nash, second by Williams.
We adopted a program back in 2011 for the Fleet Division that is more of a career path advancement promotion path. They have a Equipment Technician Certification Program where they work through the National Institute for Automotive Service Excellence, ACS. And in this certification, they look at expertise in the areas of brake repair, steering and suspension, electrical, engine repair, engine performance. And before tonight is a recommendation to promote Josh Johnson, I think he's here with us tonight, to the Equipment Technician Grade 114. Josh has been with the city since 2012 and transferred to the Fleet Division back in October of 17. He's a fast learner, skill level runs at a rapid pace, make him a valuable asset to the department. And he's earned his stripes with this certification, and we recommend this career advancement for Joshua tonight. And he's here with Chris. Chris can answer any questions about the program that you might have.
End of Josh's. Congratulations on the work you put in. Any comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2018-196.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Shane Montgomery to the position of Police Officer in the Police Department.
So moved.
Motion by Williams, second by Nash. Mr. Mizel.
I'll ask Aaron to come back up and give you this recommendation.
Great. Would like to recommend the probationary appointment of Certified Police Officer Shane Montgomery. Shane Montgomery is currently a Certified Police Officer with Warren County. He applied to work for the City Police Department because the city offers more advancement, development, and promotional opportunities for his long-term career. The department is currently short six police officers to the patrol operation. As a Certified Police Officer, Shane will not need to attend academy, but he will go through training at the city and be under probation for one year following the completion of his training.
I'd just like to say, I know Shane, and he's a very fine man and a good character. I'm proud to have him on the City Police. Congratulations. We're excited for you, too. Please call or roll.
Yes.
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 Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2018-197.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Lauren Russell to the position of Communications Dispatcher in the Police Department.
So moved.
Motion by Paragon, second by Nash. Ms. Aaron.
All right. Would like to recommend the probationary appointment of Certified Communications Dispatcher, Lauren Russell. Lauren is currently a Certified Communications Dispatcher with the Kentucky State Police. Prior to that, she was a dispatcher with the University of Louisville Police Department for a total of nine years of experience. Lauren looks to join the city for more advancement opportunities, better pay, and work-life balance. The department is currently short six dispatchers.
Congratulations for you. We won't ask you to stand up. I know you got your hands full there, but we're looking forward to your work, too. Any comments or questions?
Are you in relation to Steve?
That's good from up here. I don't want your questions. Please call or roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Wilkerson?
I know there's always a question about after you get hired, whether you slip out. You are welcome to leave, Brad, too. I don't have to stick around at all. Thank you so much for being here. Municipal order 2018-198.
Municipal order approving the reappointments of Gary Counts and Charles Mosley to the Contractors Licensing Board.
So moved.
Okay.
Motion by Nash, second by Denning. This is a reappointment to our Contractors Licensing Board, which also serves as our backup to our Building Code Board of Appeals. And they've served several years. It's kind of a technical position. We appreciate their long years of service and their continuing. I think Mr. Epling is here, too, if you had any, there he is in the back. If you had any comments or questions, please call or roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2018-199.
Municipal order approving the appointment of Michael Riggs to the City of Bowling Green Board of Ethics.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Paragon, second by Nash. This is a recommendation to replace the expiring term of Michelle Tolbert. Chef Riggs, it's not part of his job to bring food to the meetings, but I'm sure he'll get cornered to that. But appreciate his long interest and history in helping us out on the Board of Ethics. So, any comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2018-200.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting annual software subscription services from Cartograph Systems Incorporated of Dubuque, Iowa in the amount of $43,507.20.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Williams. Mr. Mizel.
Cartograph is the software that Public Works uses for the management of their street projects, sidewalks, stormwater, all the signs around town. This is just an annual subscription to renew with our sole, this is a sole source. It's our software with Cartograph for the 43507. And of course, this is paid for out of general fund. It's in the FY19 budget. Would ask for your approval.
Any questions?
Lynn is here also, if you have any questions.
Questions? Please call or roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2018-201.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2019-10 for fire station security upgrade from Four Front Solutions Incorporated of Hopkinsville, Kentucky in an amount not to exceed $75,000.
So moved.
Second.
Paragon, second by Williams.
This is the security system we use in all the other buildings. The fire stations do not have the same system. It's the FOB system most, I think all y'all have, too, that we use for security to get in and out of buildings. We are proposing to put that system in at all of the fire stations. Currently, they'll have keypads. Those key codes get reused and reused, and they're an older system. And we're proposing to replace that with the same, similar system that we have at all the other city facilities. We went out for bid, IT with Lynn Hartley. He looked over this, and we had three bids. This was an evaluated bid. It happens to be that the winner is also the low cost. But this is the key FOB system that we will install at all the fire stations, fire facilities. And Lynn Hartley's here to answer any questions you might have. We ask for your approval. All the costs will be spread over all of the general fund accounts for the Fire Department.
Any comments? Please call or roll.
Denning? Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2018-202.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2019-15 for traffic intersection connectivity and monitoring upgrades from JBK Networking Consulting, LTD of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of $58,736.10.
So moved.
Second.
By Paragon, second by Williams. Mr. Mizel.
Have a number of traffic signals, mostly downtown, that we control via these switches that are over the BGMU fiber. Public Works personnel troubleshoots the issues that come up, makes changes to the signals, keeps them running, the timing and everything with them. This software that we are wanting to get would give them the ability to control that from their desk and not have to go out light by light and try to figure out what's going on. Also comes with some cameras, tin cameras, that they would be, wouldn't be recording cameras, but cameras that they could watch and view what's going on at that intersection to check the timing of the light, any issues that they have. And we went out for bid, and JBK was the lowest cost, 58,736. This is actually going to be paid out of the Cold Mineral Tax Fund. And again, Lynn Hartley's here to answer any questions you might have. We would ask for your approval.
Any questions? Yes.
Lynn, city manager said that they do not record. Do they have the ability to record?
The answer, the short answer is yes. I believe they've just chosen not to. I'm not sure, Melissa's here to answer that. I think their primary usage would probably be traffic studies. Is that correct? So, yeah.
Thank you.
We're not going to be issuing any tickets from cameras or anything like that.
I just want to make sure that if they have the ability, that we would not turn them on to record anything unless we were to notify the citizens in advance that we were going to do that.
Questions? Please call or roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Nash.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2018-203.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2019-27 for Hewlett-Packard servers from Old American Incorporated of Newport Beach, California, in the amount of $39,045.
So moved.
Motion by Denning, second by Nash.
This is apparently IT night. We have another item for IT. We are purchasing some servers that need replacing approximately, most of these are the exchange that was implemented approximately five years ago. We're upgrading some software as well for the hardware on three servers that's related to this project. We just have some aging servers that need some attention, and we'll be replacing those. We went out for bid. We got eight responses. A company from California was the lowest bid, and all of this gets paid out of the technology fund. And again, Lynn is here to answer any questions you might have.
Lynn, you need anything else?
I'm good now.[562.54][562.54](LAUGHTER).
It's Christmas.
Christmas in October.
Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2018-204.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting negotiations after sealed bidding for bid number 2019-20 for Bowling Green Downtown Square Improvement Project from Scott &amp; Murphy Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $3,917,146.64.
So moved.
By Denning and second Nash.
As you all know, this is a major signature project that we've been working on for quite a while now. And I'd like to thank some city staff, Katie, Brent Childers, Brent Belcher, Greg Meredith, Melissa Kansler worked on it, along with Kyle Hunt. And we went out for bid. We've got one bid. It's, it was a very good bid from Mr. Murphy, Scott Murphy. Being that he was the only bid, we decided to negotiate. We discussed this at senior man, or at the BOC retreat. Mr. Murphy was even willing to meet with us on a Saturday night, one night, to talk over some, some areas we might could save some money on. So, we are at the point, though, we came in at 4.2. We have negotiated some changes, mostly in some lighting and some other areas of the project. Nothing major, but we felt like we trimmed it down to a reasonable amount and brought it in at 3,091,7146. This is to cover the, all the work on Fountain Square Park. It would also handle the two alleys of the Capitol Alley and Morris Alley, and do some work along Heritage Trail all the way down to Circus Square. This is probably the most complex project we've ever tackled here with the city that I can recall since I've been here. And we feel confident that Mr. Murphy can pull off this project and are recommending this amount of $3,917 on this project and ask for your approval. Mr. Murphy, would you like to add anything? Or? Welcome, Mr. Murphy. Glad to have you here.
You're right. It's, it's a very complex project, a lot of, lot of steps to it. And we're, we're proud to be selected to do the job, more pride in it than anything. We did this 42 years ago, and we're glad to be back to do, do it again. And we'll take good care of the downtown merchants and pedestrian traffic, vehicular traffic, and look forward to making it a fun job as it can be, to go through the experience of construction. But the final product is just going to be great. So, we're so pleased to be the person to deliver that goods to you. So, thank you so much.
Where will it start at, Mike? Where does the project go?
Start from the back of the Capitol and go down the alley to the, behind the chamber. That will be, that will be done this year, weather pending. And then we'll, we'll stop, get everything planned out, and then in the spring, not to disrupt any of the holiday activities downtown, in the spring, when temperatures are good for pouring concrete, we'll, we'll start the removal. And it is a lot of, a lot of different sections. I mean, it's, it's probably 40 different sections that we'll remove and replace in, in order to maintain the foot traffic and the vehicular traffic downtown, so.
Well, we know you do a good job. You always do a good job with the projects that you oversee, and we appreciate that and what you do for this community. And I'm sure you, if the, if the citizens will just be patient with us through all the different phases of this project, you'll, you'll deliver a product that we'll all be proud of.
Appreciate it. Like I say, we've done a lot of them over the years, and, and always take pride to do it here at home. And all of our employees love working at home, too. So, thank y'all so much for that opportunity.
How long do you anticipate this project taking? Not, not going to hold you to the day or anything.
Yeah, yeah.
Just generally.
I, I think, I think we looked at August, I believe, was the ending date. Is that right?
November 29.
Okay, yeah, yeah. It's, it's, you know, we want to get all of our concrete placed, you know, before we get into next fall. There's a lot of electrical work to do, so we'll have underground for electric and we'll have overhead for electric as well, so. And then you have all the landscaping that will take place in the fall. So, it's a lot of steps, but it'll be a fun project.
I want to reiterate what Rick said. We appreciate all you do for our community, and we're looking forward to this project being a premier project.
Thank you so much. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I know from a city standpoint, I don't know how much pride you put into your hometown and your community, but especially in the square, and it shows a lot that you yourself are here to stay and visit with us this evening for this bid. Thank you so much.
And if I could just clarify, the project scope for Phase 1 is from 10th Avenue, the intersections of 10th Avenue on College and State Street down to Spring Alley. That'll be the streetscape portion of College and State Street. We'll have Capitol Alley and Heritage Trail all the way around Fountain Square Park on Main and Park Row, and then Morris Alley. So, that's the scope of Phase 1. Phase 2 will go from Spring Alley down to, I think, 7th Avenue or 6th Avenue, but that'll be in the future.
And all of this will be paid for out of a capital project fund that we have saved up for. There will be no borrowed money. We've been planning for this for several years, and, and we have this $3.9 million prepared for Phase 1, and we'll go from there.
And downtown remains open during the project. We don't, we don't want anybody to think that we're closing off downtown while this project's being done.
It's going to be staged. Mr. Murphy will work closely with each section of tenants downtown, work closely with them, let them know what day, what times they're going to be working in front of their, their buildings. And communication will be a key, and we have, we feel confident, confident that Scott Murphy, along with Vaughn Melton, will be also involved with that communication taking place and keeping people informed.
We also have the website that we had put out earlier in the project when we're doing public meetings. That website will be up to date with the project timeline and schedule, so the public can always check in on that. I think it's BGdowntownSquare.com is the website, but we'll get that out for sure. We'll do some, some media, social media updates, and make sure the public is aware that they can check out that website at any point during the project as well.
We just, we just want to ask for everyone's patience and understand that, like I said, this is a complex, complex project, and it's going to take some time. According to Mr. Murphy, there will always be traffic flow on both sides, will never close either Park Row or Main Street if, if any at all, maybe for an hour here and there, if that. And there will always be traffic flow, and in the end, this, this is going to be a crown jewel of Bowling Green. We're, as I've said before, we're the third largest city in the state, fastest-growing area in the state, and this is going to bring us into the 21st century, I believe. And it's going to really be, really a project we can brag about and be proud of, and attract more people downtown and get it back to the way it used to be. So, we're excited.
Two other, two other things I wanted to add. The removal process in front of the storefronts will be done at night.
Hey, Mike, do you care to step up there?
I'll repeat it if you. The removal process downtown in front of the stores will be done at night, so it won't disrupt, you know, their store hours. And, but we'll work out every single business as far as, you know, the removals and replacements. And then the other item I wanted to say was, we'll be using the same staff as we did on Fountain Square Park, the same project managers and field superintendents.
Thank you. The only thing I wanted to add is, if, if my history and my numbers are right, Fountain Square Park is more than 150 years old. They put the fountain there 146 years ago, and I think it's important that what we recognize as what we're trying to do is preserve downtown for 146 years from now. And that if we're not willing to do so now and spend the money now, it only becomes more expensive to do in the future, and, and our downtown and our parks start to show the wear and tear of that. This is, this is a big, complicated project, but it's also a very important project for not only the past history of Bowling Green, but I believe the future of Bowling Green.
Why don't we propose to have a time capsule somewhere down there pertaining to the park?
Great idea. Is it, Mr. Murphy, is it my understanding that your family has been, and your, your company and your dad's company has been the only people to do work?
What Slim's talking about, that was my great-grandfather.
Exactly.
Initial stonework in Fountain Square Park.
Wow.
Yeah. So, you know, that's, that's pretty important to our history and to our heritage. And moving forward, I think Joe's idea of a time capsule is wonderful.
I won't be here to open it up or anything, but at least someone will.
We'll put him in it.[1250.21][1250.21](LAUGHTER).
Yeah, put me in from the start.
Crack him out in 150 years, see how things are going.
Yeah, I'd like that.
Okay, then.
But we should consider a time capsule of some sort.
You'll make an assignment to look into that, won't you?
Uh, sure.
Okay. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Yeah, we're thrilled that the, that the Murphy family is, is going to be continuing with their, their history of helping us in downtown.
All right.
Mike's son is the one that is the superintendent of the projects now.
Call the roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2018-43.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning attractive land containing 2.551 acres from RM4 multifamily residential and HB Highway Business to Highway Business located at Zerol Scottsville Road, presently owned by Bowling Green Partners LLC.
So moved.
Motion by Perrigen, second by Nash. This is the first reading of a unanimous recommendation from Planning and Zoning for rezoning. Any comments or questions?
One.
Yes, sir.
Ben, who is Bowling Green Partners?
The, the people listed on the LLC page is Thomas Pappas and John Moran.
Comments or questions? Please call, yes, sir.
I'm sorry, and it was a question I told Ben that I was going to ask. And that is, what does, oh, I've forgotten the words now, substantially?
Generally consistent.
Generally consistent with the flume. What does it mean?
So, so I assume you're, just for clarification, looking at our staff report. So, the staff report, of course, is a staff's tool to, to communicate with the Planning Commission, the, what the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance says and how that applies to, to a particular development. So, just looking at the first page of our staff report, where you find that, that term, we have that points to consider. And that is where we use terms as clues to the Planning Commission to say how staff sees compliance potentially with that comprehensive plan, so tools. So, if you compare that to the one you proved earlier, Hope House Ministries, you'll see the term, the proposal is consistent with the future land use map, and so on. This one says the proposal is generally consistent with the flume and the commercial category. So, in this particular regard, again, we would use those as clues to say, hey, look at all the detail. We do our staff reports in layers, so peel some of those layers back and see more detail of what we may mean by that. In regards to this particular application, we had the split future land use map category to where it wasn't wholly within one category or the other, but it was generally consistent with the, with the majority of what that, that required.
And so, my question is, if I see generally consistent going forward, and I'm trying to educate both myself and the public on this, it can, it will consistently mean the same thing across projects?
Generally. Generally consistent. So, so.
That's the tricky part.
Yeah, it is the tricky part. So, that, that is truly a case-by-case, a development-by-development basis. And so, what, again, to, to, I guess, for the, for the public's education is, so this is our tool as a communication to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission considers the staff report as one-third of the equation, so a third what the staff tells them and communicates to them, a third what the applicant and the application says in their testimony, and then the third, the other third would be the public input in the public hearing they hear at the Planning Commission, which we don't know when we offer the staff reports, obviously, because we haven't had that, had that hearing. Then the Planning Commission body then considers those things and then makes the recommendation to, to you, you all as the governing body. So, so that, that's how that, how that works.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?[1520.42][1520.42](LAUGHTER).
I'm going to go with yes.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2018-205.
Municipal order approving and authorizing out-of-town travel expenses for city manager Jeffrey Mizel to attend the Kentucky League of Cities Conference in Louisville, Kentucky.
So moved.
Motion by Nash, second by Williams. This is just reimbursement for the Kentucky League of Cities Conference in Louisville that he spent several days for. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2018-206.
Municipal order approving a job development incentive program employee withholdings credit agreement with Cannon Automotive Solutions, Bowling Green Incorporated, a division of the Electromac Group.
So moved.
Second. Perrigen, second by Nash.
I'd like to ask Katie to go over the details of this incentive agreement that we're going to do with Cannon Automotive.
We had a meeting, I believe it was last month now, in September, where the chamber staff presented an expansion project in the Kentucky Transpark for Cannon Automotive Solutions of Bowling Green, sorry, Bowling Green. This is a division of Electromac. We did, when Electromac first located in Bowling Green in around 2007, we did a five-year incentive agreement for 67 new jobs at that time. So, this is an expansion of their company for 60 new jobs. They're looking to invest $23.5 million. We match the Kentucky Business Investment Program with a 1% withholdings credit agreement to the state's 3%. And the 1% agreement that we'll provide from the city is approximately $327,410 over the 10-year period that the company will be able to receive back to, to reinvest within this expansion. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2018-207.
Municipal order approving amendments to the City of Bowling Green procurement card policy and procedures, financial policies and procedures, and travel policies and procedures.
Moved.
Second. Motion by Nash, second by Williams.
With the change of positions, hiring Katie a CFO, we had some cleanup to do with our financial policies and procedures manual. We had a few other changes we've highlighted in your packet, the changes in red and blue. I'll turn it over to Katie to give you or answer questions if you would like. The other part of this is the amendments to our travel policy and, I believe, our P-card policy, if I'm correct. Katie is here to briefly give you a summary or answer questions, however you want to do it.
If somebody has a specific question or request that? Any comments?
These are mostly cleanup items.
Comments? Call the roll.
Denning.
Comments?
Benning? Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2018-208.
Municipal order approving tax increment financing district summary of 2017 incremental revenue and authorizing distribution to the appropriate recipients.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams, Mr. Mizel.
Before I turn it over to Katie, I'd like to note that this is our 10th year of distributing TIF money. It's hard to believe. But in those 10 years, we have, this year brings, this 10th year brings us to 4.4 million, $386,000 that we have distributed as our 80% incremental revenue. So, Katie, Katie has the details for the 2017 distribution, can go over that with you real quick.
I'm actually going to hand this off to Sean Weeks. Sean has done all the labor work on this project. This is new in terms of doing the calculations and the revenue sharing agreement, and Sean is more up to speed on this than I am. But this is an annual distribution that we do, so I'm going to turn it over to Sean.
After reviewing all of the incremental revenues that we had between the original and expanded blocks, the original area blocks, we, we had a total of $483,546 incremental revenue. Of that, the 80% to the authority and, and its subsidiaries there will be $386,837, with the city, city keeping 20%, $96,709. For the expanded area, we had a total of $781,365, with the authority share being $625,092, with the city keeping $156,273. So, there's going to be a grand total of $1,011,929 that's going to be distributed to different organizations, to three specific ones, one to the block, six IRB, one to the authority, which will then be parceled out to multiple entities, and then another piece to this adjusted city increment account to, to be backstops for bond payments. You guys have any questions, comments, other?
I have one question. You may not answer it. It's somewhat off the wall. Do you know what, if I, if, if, what I, if I understand correctly and if I read correctly, in 2017, we drew in 1.2 million?
What?
Pulled in 1.2 million.
Yeah, correct, yes.
Do you know what we were pulling in the year before the TIF started?
We set a.
I can tell you the first year.
I can tell you the second real quick.
The first year after the TIF?
This is 2008. We, it was $34,864, and the 80%, or the 80% total was $34,864. Total growth was $43,580 back in 2008, so.
When I think about that, I mean, I, I think there's a lot of ways that we can measure the TIF, and there are proponents and oppo, and opponents of it. But I think to hear that we were generating $34,000 off property, that today we're generating 1.2 million off of, is worth noting.
I think it's a testament to the area and how we've seen the growth and how we can give it to some of the blighted areas to be able to, to see an improvement of, of not only, you know, revenues in the city, but kind of the livability for the city, so.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
And I know this is tedious work. Thank you for doing this.
Always interesting every year.
Thank you, Sean.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Benning? Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, first reading of ordinance BG 2018-44.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number one to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2019.
Don't move.
Second.
Paragon, second by Williams.
This is our first amendment for FY19. We've made it, what, three months, four months? And Katie's here, can present or summarize what, what's in here, or answer any questions, however you want to do it.
Comments or questions from? Had it over the weekend. We had it over the weekend. Not that we don't want to hear from you, it's just we already know the information. So, any other comments? Please call the roll.
Benning? Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2018-209.
Municipal order approving fiscal years 2018-19 through 2021-22 capital improvement program for the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky.
Don't move.
Second.
Paragon, second by Williams.
This is our three-year capital plan. Obviously, the first year, FY19, has already been adopted and approved by you for, for budget. But beyond that, we present to you what we kind of think could be on the horizon. Katie is responsible for this and has Marilyn Paragon as an assistant to, to put all this together. And I'll hand it off to Katie, answer any questions that you might have, or.
Is that a technical term, kind of think?
Well, I'm sorry.
That's what the outlying ears kind of think we might want to do.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's it.
If you'll allow, I will briefly go over some changes for FY19.
It's, it's non-committal, I guess, at this, at this point.
The fiscal year 19 is the only one that's set and that you approved by budget, but we did have a few adjustments since we approved the budget back in June to where we are today. And I'll just briefly summarize those. We had three projects that did come in, overbid, so we've had to adjust some account balances for those. That's the street resurfacing project, the Small House Road, Phase Two Construction Downtown Improvement Project. We had fund balance available for each of those projects, so again, we're not issuing any new debt. This is not anything we couldn't cover. You have approved all three of those projects already by municipal order for the bids, so we're just doing the backfill on the budget amendment portion, and then the capital project update. Public Works Operations Roof Replacement, we did a bid for it, found out that the $26,000 we had in the budget just wasn't going to be enough. So, Public Works decided to postpone doing that project replacement. This is on the green building at the facility at Lapsley Lane for Operations Division. They decided to postpone that project until next fiscal year, and will budget more money again next year. We'll just carry forward the $26,000 from this year's budget and then add another $40,000 or so for next year's budget. Preston Miller Outdoor Fitness Project, you've already accepted some donated funds for that project, $55,000 in donated funds, so we just updated that project amount by the donation. We had a change in the name from Old Louisville Road to River Street, so we just updated that, obviously, in the CIP. We did carry some money forward from FY18. We found some underspending in the Fire Improvement Fund to purchase some ballistic protection equipment for the Fire Department. This is a new provision. I would let Jason Coulson provide more information if you'd like it on that, but we did find some underspending, carried that money forward for an FY19 project. And then we have the addition of a new road project, which was established after the budget, related to some developments at the intersection of Nashville Road and McClellan Road. So, we're looking to widen McClellan Road there at the entrance by Nashville Road and Greystone Subdivision. We did receive some funding, $45,000 from the developers to participate in this project, and then the city will cover the other part of that, about $70,000. So, we added that project as well to the CIP. And then, as Mr. Mizel indicated, all out-year projects, so FY2020, 2021, and 2022, those are really a wish list. When we start development of those budgets in those budget years, we would then narrow those projects down to what we can afford to do at that time period. Right now, we just have those on the list so that we don't forget about them. These are projects that will help for the future development of the community and the city, so we want to, we don't want to lose sight of those projects. But obviously, every year, we develop a new budget, and we have to determine what we can afford and not afford, so those projects shift from time to time.
This document is commonly used by most municipalities, and it's, sometimes it's, it's requested by agencies, bonding agencies, just to see what we have going on, what's down the road. So, we put this together for you just to kind of give you a three-year outlook, and we don't ask you, like Katie said, we're not asking you to commit to this line by line, but this is kind of what we're seeing, kind of a forecast. So, it's, it's a common document, commonly used by other cities and counties, so just want to bring that to your attention.
Other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Benning? Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, municipal order 2018-210.
Municipal order authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance Through the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program in the Amount of $18,450.
Don't move.
Motion by Nash, second by Williams, Mr. Mizel.
Nick has found us money again for some bulletproof vests, and it's a 50% match. We think we can purchase 41 vests for a total of $36,900 and only have to pay for half of that. And these things last for five years, and ask for your approval of this. Chief Hawkins, I think, is still here, and Nick too, so if you have any questions.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Benning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, municipal order 2018-211.
Municipal order authorizing and approving the submission of an application for Homeland Security Grant Funds through the Federal Emergency Management Agency Assistance to the Firefighters Grant Program in the Amount of $114,300 for the purchase of a mobile breathing air trailer system for the Fire Department.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Nash, Mr. Mizel.
And Nick Cook, and I think Chief Coulson worked on this project. This is for the, the breathing apparatuses, the tanks. Right now, we've got two stations that we can do, do, do at those stations, and then we have another station that has to transport and fill up the other station, so these are kind of getting old. The, the one at South Side and West Side are approximately 20 years old. This would get us a mobile apparatus that we could travel around with and fill up tanks at each of the locations of the fire stations. And we would only have a, where is it, a 10% match on this, if we could get this grant. So, this would be another really good grant to get for the Fire Department. So, we're asking for your approval to submit for this. And Chief and, and Nick are here for any questions.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Benning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2018-212.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Kentucky Department for Libraries and Archives for the Kentucky Local Records Program in an estimated amount up to $80,000.
Don't move.
Motion by Nash, second by.
Another opportunity, and this is for our records retention. We have so much stuff that we have to keep for, for records retention purposes. We did open up the, the records facility, and Ashley and Jen do a good job of managing that. And this would be $80,000 we could put toward microfilming approximately 200 boxes of stuff that we have that goes way, way, way back in some cases. So, we found a firm that we think could, could do this. They're getting ready to go out for bids, and we'll, we'll be back to you with the recommendation on a bid. But if we could get this grant, $80,000 would go a long way for this, so hopefully get this, and we recommend your approval for submission.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Benning? Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, municipal order 2018-213.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of an application to New American Economy and Welcoming America for the Gateways for Growth Challenge Grant in the Amount Up to $12,500.
Don't move.
Paragon, second by Nash, Mr. Mizel.
This is a program that was related to the New Americans study, New American Economy study that we recently received, and we would like to partner up with the Chamber and the, the Workforce Development Board to submit an application for this grant as well. What we would do is, it would become, it would help us come up with a strategic plan to get our New Americans plugged into all of the, the jobs we have available. We feel like this is an important pipeline that we need to tap into to help fill the 6,000 vacant jobs we have in our community. Brent Childers is here to answer any questions, but this would be a 50% match of this grant. And again, we would be partnering with the Chamber and the South Central Workforce Development Board. We'd ask for your okay to, to submit for this grant.
Comments or questions?
I'd just like to, to thank Nick for continuing to dig and find these things, and the management, the, the different departments that seek these things out. It's not just this one grant, but we saw, we saw several tonight here that saved the city a lot of money, and we thank you for that.
Please call the roll.
Benning? Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, municipal order 2018-214.
Municipal order approving an agreement between the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Department of Highways, and the City of Bowling Green related to construction of a connector road between Russellville Road and Kobe Way.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Nash, Mr. Mizel.
This is another project we've been working on. As she, if you'll remember, we went out, I think it was the 2004, 2007 general obligation bond issue, where we went out and bought right-of-way for Southwest Parkway to connect Russellville Road with Nashville Road. The plans were to make kind of a thoroughfare through there, that we never really got going with, with state funding there, but we're at the point now, though, we've got them to agree to, to get to a point that would connect Russellville Road to a Kobe, close to Kobe in the South Industrial Park. And I think this is, I think about a mile or two stretch, and would construct a four-lane road from Russellville Road to that point to get another connection into the South Industrial Park. KYTC has elected to distribute this in two phases. This memorandum of agreement in front of you tonight is for the first phase that would include acquisition, design, right-of-way acquisition, if we, any more needed, design, and then utility relocation in the amount of $680,000. Since Greg Meredith is not with us, Melissa is here, and I think can answer any questions you might have on this project, but it's, it's all state funding.
Any comments or questions?
Get this started.
I got a comment. Melissa, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a real safety issue, correct? When trains are stuck in the, in the industrial park and, and then fire and police and what, what have you, ambulance can't get to some of our.
Right, right. Kobe Way is currently a cul-de-sac. When it crosses the railroad tracks, there's Kobe, and another new facility, and I believe the, is it Hinkle, the large distributor, they cannot get in or out. So, there's a, a kind of an access, a private access, so that an ambulance need to get back there, but it's not a very, you know, it's not a very good one. So, the thought is to do a, just kind of continue that road, two-lane, up to a point where we do have the right-of-way for, for the portion of Southwest Parkway that would then continue to Russellville Road. So, kind of an entrance off of Russellville Road like we had envisioned to begin with, but then from a certain point, it would just continue a two-lane industrial-type connector. So, really a two-part piece that we think serves a better purpose than currently than what the original Southwest Parkway would serve at this point.
Semi-trucks be able to access this as well?
Excuse me?
Semi-trucks be able to come in and out?
Yes, it's intended for industrial traffic.
I misspoke when I said four-lane. That was the original idea, four-lane all the way from Russell Road to Nashville Road, but this, this would be two-lane.
We're not sure what that front piece will look like. Obviously, it'd be more than a two-lane. Initially, it was a boulevard of sorts. We may constrict that down, but of course, it will carry the traffic it needs to carry there in and out.
It's a wider two-lane street, wider than what we're used to as a street.
Right, typically, the industrial, at least back when we did the South Industrial Park, it was 15-foot lanes to carry that traffic. So, we'll make sure to accommodate that, and of course, any turn lanes at Russellville Road to carry the traffic in and out.
I just wanted to clarify that safety issue, just because there's so many areas of, of improvement that we need. Why is this one a priority?
Right, it is definitely a need back for those folks, and there's a lot of folks back there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Benning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, first reading of ordinance BG 2018 45.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances, ordinance amending chapter nine, general offenses of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordnances to repeal permit requirements for public panhandling, begging, charitable, and political solicitation.
So moved.
Motion by Paragon, second by Nash. Mr. Mizeal, you want to take the lead on this?
If, if you'll recall, we, we talked about this at our retreat a few weeks ago. And, uh, Gene has put together some amendments to chapter nine. And I'll, I'll turn it over to Gene to, to briefly show you what we did here.
Uh, well, I will pass it to Ashley. Ashley prepared the ordinance. I looked at it. But, uh, as you recall, we, uh, came up these regulations several months ago. Uh, at the time, one of the things we did add was a permit requirement. Uh, I think since that went into effect, I think began to question whether it's as effective as we intended it and wanted it to be. As we discussed at the retreat, I think the, um, uh, decision was not really a decision, but at least kind of recommendation discussion at that time was to go ahead and eliminate that permit requirement entirely. That's just what this ordinance does. Everything else still remains the same. The only thing that's been changed here is the elimination of the permit.
And so for a point of clarification, because I don't want people, uh, in the, in the public to misunderstand, the city has limited ability to restrict panhandling because of a federal law. And so First Amendment under, uh, well, federal court.
It's a constitution.
You're right, you're right. That tricky constitution. Uh, uh, but so, so what this, what we had in place was a permitting process. And so what we're doing with this particular ordinance is eliminating what we tried as far as a permitting process. But that does not mean that we are eliminating a person's ability to panhandle. Uh, there, there, there are lots of components to this. Uh, I, I think eliminating the permitting is wise. Uh, I was also for it, uh, when we first did it and we, we, it was, it was a trial project that wasn't working. Uh, but the city's hands are tied in a lot of different ways related to restricting panhandling, uh, because of a ruling by the federal courts declaring panhandling, um, protected by the Constitution.
Anyone else?
I will take a moment to add my own commentary to this. Uh, panhandling is illegal in the, in the right-of-way. If someone steps out, holds a sign and steps out and you give them something, both the giver and the, uh, receiver are in violation of the ordinance. Is that correct?
Yes, and right. I mean, I don't have all him, but we also did other restrictions about within some feet of, uh, ATM machines, entrances to buildings, some other things too. We restricted it in quite a few places, but you're correct. Uh, we did restrict it at the intersections. Uh, and it's, it did make it, um, uh, against this ordinance provisions for not only the person to ask for money, but also for the people and the vehicles to give the money.
Because of the safety issue with people running in and out of traffic, and it's just not a wise thing to do. I think the statistics that we had, was it seventy percent, uh, of the panhandlers that you see on the corners are not actually.
Homeless.
Homeless.
Yes, that's some statistics. I've seen that, uh, seventy percent or more are not.
These are people that are active, that are actively engaging this, in this behavior as a form of employment, as a way to generate revenue for themselves, which I think oftentimes confuses people because they think they're handing that dollar out the window and they think that they're helping somebody who's homeless. Uh, they're putting themselves at risk, they're putting the panhandler at risk, and they're putting the public at risk and oftentimes not for the very reason that they think they are. I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, that's exactly what I wanted, the point I wanted to bring out. So if, if you feel, um, a compulsion or obligation to help in the area of homelessness, uh, we would encourage you to look to charitable organizations like, uh, Hotel Inc., Hope House, Salvation Army, et cetera. Those are the three that come to mind. So, uh, there are others I'm sure that will be happy to help you there. Downtown churches do a lot as well. So, any other comments or questions?
Um, I think we are going to do a social media kind of promotion, correct?
Yes.
We decided that in our retreat to, to let folks know, um, you know, how to properly give. And, uh, if, if, you know, you want to give, that's great. But, but there's places, ways to do that more effectively than dollars at your window.
We live in a community with a big heart. There's no doubt about that. And the people, uh, want to help other people. And that's, we want to keep it that way. But as the mayor said, there are organizations that you should look to that are doing this work and they do an excellent job at it. And we don't need to be supporting professional panhandlers.
All right, please call the roll.
Binning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. And we'll be taking a five-minute recess while I obtain the public comment sheet. If anybody here that wants to make a public comment, please make sure their name's on the list so I can call you. Turn to our public comments section of the city commission meetings, and we have one, uh, citizen's asked to speak, Victoria Golden Thompson. Ms. Thompson?
Thank you. Yes, my name is Victoria Golden Thompson. And I just kind of wanted to recount to you basically my experience with the city commission. Um, I've been a Warren County girl for twenty-two years. And then I met a Bowling Green boy and we married and I moved into the city. In that time, my property in Warren County, the road was widened without my, without any knowledge or prior approval. The, um, my renter just notified me that the land had been marked up. I called everywhere and nobody knew. I showed up to the city commission and the blueprints for expanding my road were on the overhead. But no one could tell me at the time what was going on. They said, oh, it was just a last-minute thing. Then a couple of years later, I was told we were going to have sidewalks put in the road on my county property. And I spoke to Mr. Harmon and said, can you please put it across the street? Because I live on a pretty much highly commercial area. And I was told that, well, if you do not agree to this, we will eminent domain your house, we will take your house, and we will give you what we think it's worth and we will condemn it.
Uh, may I, may I ask you one question before you go?
Yes, sir.
I didn't get an understanding of what road you were talking about.
Greenwood Lane, which is now Bluegrass Farms Boulevard. It was during the time in which Gander Mountain was being brought in. Then, after that, uh, let's see. So I agreed and the, uh, the sidewalks went in. Couple of years later, my land was reassessed and my property taxes doubled. After that, again, uh, then a couple of years after that, as we know, we've had the RAP debacle. And that's cost the taxpayers a lot of money also. So after that, um, I now live in Bowling Green, in the city. And a road near where I live, on Robinson Avenue, was told, oh, we're going to close that because the railroad needs that. And our neighbors came in and it was told, oh, no, that's going to have to happen. And it took a private citizen suing the city and the railroad to make sure that road stayed open. And one of our concerns, as was mentioned earlier, is that there were ambulances that couldn't get to us. Our closest ambulance and fire was on the other side of the road. It was on the other side of Russellville Road. Closing that road would have also included hurting local business on Russellville Road. So I would like to ask you all to consider more transparency, more inclusion, more respect of individual property rights. And again, I think we need to maybe return to a government that is for the people, by the people, and of the people. And I'd appreciate you all considering your individuals a little bit more and your businesses a little bit less. Thank you.
What street do you live on now?
Cedar Ridge.
Live on Cedar Ridge?
Uh huh, yes, sir.
What has, what problems do you have on Cedar Ridge that you would like?
Robinson, Robinson is about a tenth of a mile away. And the road is now open and it stays open. And the train no longer blocks the track. But it wasn't from the efforts here, it was efforts from individuals that took care of that.
It blocks Emmett Avenue today.
You would now like for us to look at what?
Well, at this point, um, I don't need you all to do anything. I just wanted to let you know that in the fourteen years I've lived in the city, there have been a lot of great things. I do understand that there needs to balance, to be a balance between business and, and people. But I think you need to focus a little bit more on your people.
Now, going back to reassessment of your property, now that is not done by us. Not any of us here do that. That's.
Yes, sir. But you lowered the property taxes by point oh one, which doesn't make any difference. I mean, when you double someone's property taxes and you lower it by point oh one, it's really not helping the individual. And my concern is that when you have all these major developments, these major developments need to be able to support themselves. And that the taxpayers of the individual homes do not need to bear the burden of the taxes.
So, if you, uh, what development has been developed that we have had to do anything with other than, uh?
What I'm saying is if your growth is six percent, you're supposed to lower property taxes, which should help the individual. The prop, then those things should have been able self-supporting. And your property taxes should have been lowered a little bit more than point oh one. That is my point.
City attorney, Mr. City Manager, can you respond to what she's talking about?
This current year, Katie can correct me, but this is the first year we, we were over four percent for existing growth. And that's the only portion that you look at is existing growth. And I think we were at four point five. And you're only allowed to be at four. And so we lowered it by the one-tenth of a cent. And the years before that, we've never, we have not reached that four percent. So we, we've left the, we left the rate at point two zero six since two thousand eight. We went ten years at the same property tax rate, which, uh, most people didn't, most other agencies and, uh, taxing authorities did not do during those ten years except for us. So, uh, we've, we've, we've either kept it level or even reduced it for the last ten years. So the, the assessment part, though, is something that the Property Evaluation Administrator's Office, he, has to, to, they, they go out and, and do review every five, at least once every five years. And you would have to work with them, uh, on your dispute of the value of that property. So that we have, we just, we just receive the tax rule from them. We don't have anything to do with val, valuing the property. Um, so that's kind of how that works.
Just thinking that you did not eminent domain my house and then later on have the property double in value. So, thanks for not doing that.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Just also as a reminder, and it was in two thousand eight when the county expanded or added the library tax of, what, four point six cents per hundred. We lowered our property tax, uh, by that same amount so that the city taxpayer would not be doubly taxed, uh, for, for library services. So we kind of gave them a wash on that as well.
Correct.
Any other comments or questions? This is our, uh, last meeting for this month. Our next scheduled meeting will be November twentieth, two thousand eighteen, because November sixth is a day important to many people that go cash their ballots. Thank you very much for tuning in.